We're ready when you are, Mayor.
Call to order, the adjourned regular meeting Monday, April 29th, 2024 at 6:00 P. M. Can I get a roll call?
Mayor of Holden.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Hibbard.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
If we could please stand, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink, who will give the invocation. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads with me. Our gracious heavenly father, we just thank you so much that we can come together and do the work of our city and our people and our businesses. And we just ask that you bless us tonight as we discuss and talk about this contract and as we value so much our first responders and make sure that they are taken care of and they've got a good quality of life and that they feel valued as part of our city. We ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Okay, we'll start with oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Do we have any speakers? Madam Clerk, did we, do we have anything to read?
Give it up.
Okay. At this time, we'll move on to the updates from the mayor. Pleased to announce that the City of Los Alamos has been nominated in four categories from the esteemed Association of California City of Orange County for the Golden Hub of Innovation Awards. A press release went out today, but I'd like to take a moment to highlight our staff nominees. The Recreation and Community Services Director, Emeline Noda, was nominated for the City Staff Leader of the Year. Emeline's exemplary dedication and innovative contributions have significantly enriched the community of Los Alamos, underscoring her as a standout candidate for this recognition. Her achievements are impressive in their scope and impact and demonstrate a deep commitment to fostering inclusivity, enhancing community well-being, and promoting civic engagement. Although Emeline does not reside in Los Alamos, her actions and dedication reflect a profound sense of belonging and commitment to the community. She approaches her work with a heart of true, of a true resonant, driven by a desire to see the community thrive. If she was here, I'd say congratulations, Emeline. Yeah. Next, we have City Manager Chet Simmons was nominated for the City Manager of the Year. Under Mr. Simmons' leadership, our city has experienced a remarkable turnaround and renaissance from overcoming significant financial challenges to the construction of new facilities and creating best-in-class services for our residents and businesses. He has repeatedly taken seemingly impossible situations and turned them into a, into signature wins for our city. Beyond his abilities as a city manager, Chet embodies the qualities we would all hope for in a leader. He works tirelessly to ensure that our team knows their value to the organization and to the community as a whole. At this time, when all the industries are experiencing a revolving door of hiring, he has fostered an environment where the staff knows they have been set up to succeed and then have been given a room and resources they need to thrive. So, thank you, Chet. Congratulations. Good job. The ACCOC Golden Hub of Innovation Award winners will be announced at the ACCOC Leadership Summit on May 8th in front of local government officials, community leaders, and stakeholders, who will come together and celebrate the achievements and leaders from across Orange County. Updates from the city staff. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I only have one, actually. Backed by popular man, on Thursday, we will be starting our Party on Pine series again. So, down on Pine Street, there will be, obviously, music and live entertainment. It's obviously a great time, and I believe that starts at 6:30 P. M.
Okay.
And that's it, sir.
Okay. Consent calendar. All calendar, all consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item. So, seemingly, we have just one consent calendar item. Item A. Do we need a staff report, or can we move forward?
I know the item.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have number nine, discussion item. This is the adoption of resolution establishing salaries and benefits for non-represented employees. Can I get a staff report on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to ask the city attorney to give a support as is required by state law.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. As you noted, the item before you for consideration this evening is adoption of a resolution establishing salaries and benefits for non-represented employees. Adoption of the resolution will serve as final action on the compensation paid by the city to certain local agency executives. As required by the Brown Act, as amended by S. B. 1436, I will be providing a verbal summary of the changes to local agency compensation that will result from adoption of the proposed resolution. Executive management and all other non-represented employees will receive a cost of living or COLA adjustment totaling 18% over four years. Beginning in April of 2024, there'll be an 8% COLA adjustment that goes to 3% in 2025, 3% in 2026, and 4% in 2027. In addition, the city will increase its contribution to monthly medical insurance payments for executive management and all other non-represented employees. Currently, the city pays a monthly medical insurance amount of $1,319 for an individual employee. That amount would remain current from 2025 through 2027. In the year 2028, that amount would be increased by $50 to $1,369. The amount of monthly medical insurance paid by the city for an employee plus one dependent is currently $1,419. That would increase by $331 to $1,750 in 2025. An increase of $100 in 2026 for a total of $1,850. An increase of $100 in 2027 for a total of $1,950. And an increase of $100 in 2028 for a total of $2,050. For families consisting of an employee and more than one dependent, the city currently pays $1,469 for monthly medical insurance. That amount would be increased by $331 in the year 2025 for a total of $1,800. There would be an additional increase in 2026 of $150, resulting in a total of $1,950. An additional increase of $150 in year 2027 for a total of $2,100. And finally, an additional increase of $150 in the year 2028 for a total of $2,250. And with that, I conclude my report.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd just like to point out that the, the deal that you have before you is a four-year deal, which is, actually, I'm sorry, let me correct that. It is a four-year and three-month deal, which is not typical in the industry. We're seeing two- and three-year deals, I think, across the board. That being said, I do feel that this is a good package aimed at staff retention and attraction. And again, I'd like to compliment our Admin Services Manager, Chelsea Wilson, and the team at L. C. W. for the work that they did on this, on this negotiation and putting this together, not only for the non-represented group, which is the item that you're voting on now, but the item that you just approved for the, the P. O. A. And I'll give a lot of credit to the P. O. A. and their leadership as well, simply because they showed up to the room ready to discuss what exactly was important to them. They were clearly grounded in what reality was and what the real economics of the city are. And I think that it really, I guess, this has been kind of what I'll say, a, the linchpin contract of what we've been working towards for the last four years of trying to build an organization that would be able to handle the, the needs and the desires of the, of the community as we move forward. And so, again, I believe that this is a, a strong deal that will allow us to have some good retention and some labor piece for the next four years and three months.
Are there any questions from City Council?
I just have one quick question. The non-represented offer, that is the same offer that the police accepted, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's four years and three months and the same as far as financial and everything else?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. What cities were surveyed in establishing that salaries and benefits for the non-represented employees in comparison to Los Alamos?
So, we have done a cost comparison across multiple cities, but then we also engaged a firm to do a draft of a compensation plan, and that included, I'm sorry, I'm going to do this from memory, but Buena Park, the city of Westminster, Seal Beach, Cypress, and La Palma. The reason for that was similar workload, the amount of events, also similar calls for service, and then also the current MOUs require that the city uses the city of Seal Beach and Cypress in its, in its benchmarking.
And what are the population figures for each of these cities? Are they comparable with our 12,000 in Los Alamos?
Uh, no, they are not. That being said, I would say that just from a service standpoint, while yes, we are a city of 12,000, we service an industry that is dramatically larger than that. And my case in point will be to point at the, the July fireworks extravaganza that we put on, where we had over 12,000 people at an event when we only have 12,000 people in the city.
Do you know the respective general reserves of each of the comparable cities that were used?
I do not.
Is there a way that we can go ahead and have that, so I can review it?
Yes, that would be available on their websites, so we can compile that list. I wouldn't, that's not a problem. I'd be happy to say also that our reserves have doubled in the last four years.
I know, I'm just looking at incomparable with the cities that have been surveyed for the non-represented employee salaries and benefits. So, I'm just looking at all, a comprehensive look of everything. So. And was there a special criteria that was used or employed for figuring out the salaries and benefits for the non-represented employees, such as was it like their experience, how long they've been in the position?
The positions are compared across the board as to what exactly the industry standard is. We contracted an outside expert in order to do that analysis, to keep it impartial. And then essentially, what happens is they go through your, I'll call it your position control, this type of positions that you have. They analyze those positions to see if they are similar to like-titled positions in other cities, and then they do a comparison along those, along those lines. One place where that does get difficult is, again, in a city of this size, you have staff that's wearing many different hats. And so, a perfect example would be someone like our Parks and Rec Director, who is not just our Parks and Rec Director, she's also our Director of Intergovernmental Affairs. And so, we essentially are getting, I'll call it, someone that in a larger city would probably split into two different positions.
And is that contractor information readily available for anyone to preview? In regards to, you said, the industry standards that were contracted out to an outside party? You said an outside agency was used so that there wouldn't be any unfairness. So, would that?
Yeah, once that report is completed, yeah, it would be available to the public.
Is it possible that you can provide like an overview of like the current staffing levels in the various departments?
Actually, if you, if you can indulge me, there's a, this coming meeting. We will have actually a complete report of actually the staffing within the various departments and what exactly some of the goals are for the coming year and past accomplishments that were achieved this year. So, staff is currently putting that together. So, if, as I said, if you can indulge me for one meeting, you can, you'll have an entire report on it.
Great, yeah, because my next question was, can we review all the objectives and accomplishments that have been done by the staff members in each of the departments? And I recently was speaking with a few residents just to see if they can give me any questions that they like to propose. And one of the residents had mentioned that they were reviewing the city website, and the city website hadn't been updated with the compensation reports or the M. I. MOUs in two years. Is there a reason why that hasn't been updated?
The current agreements aren't expired yet, so there wouldn't be a reason to update it.
I will note, though, after these, if the council chooses to approve these, these will be available on the website with all of the, I think, we also have a backwards-looking log as well.
Correct.
Okay. Is it possible, I understand that we're reviewing three different levels, which is the executive level, the confidential confidentiality employees, and the middle management employees. Is there a reason why it's put into one blanket decision instead of looking at each level separately or individually?
As a non-represented group, there, there is no collective bargaining with this, with this entire slate of, of employees. And the, I think the distinctions that you referenced, being middle management, classified confidential, and the executive team are just umbrellas that we use internally in order to designate which category they would fall into. And so, that's why it's done as a group, because none of the people that reside within this group collectively bargain.
So, each of the levels are not distinctive with comparison to each other? They basically do with the same roles or duties? Is that what it is?
No, I, I think that that might be a simplification. I think that this is a category as a whole that is not represented, and that is why it's contained within the same document as opposed to splitting it up into three different documents.
Has this always been done, where it's all been non-represented employees?
There's common practice throughout the industry.
Okay, no, for the city of Los Alamos, is this what?
Yes.
Already been done? Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
What's the total of our current unfunded pension liability?
Craig, you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to say that we are just above... Well, now I'm actually going to ask you to tell me.
I think it's approximately 26 million.
Thank you.
26 million.
And with, that is with regards to our unfunded liability when it comes to pension and retirement. I'll remind the council that you enacted a plan that should have that number paid down by the time we reach 12 years from now. We're one year into that process. We also, having taken the step to actually put a plan in place to pay down that amount early, the council has subsequently also authorized staff to put $50,000 a month away into our trust, which will further hopefully speed up that process. Again, I'll say, kind of in reference to the comment that was made earlier, while we are a city of 12,000, we are, I like to think, behaving as a city that is maybe seven, eight times our size by having a plan that's already been approved and already has money being put away to actually address those issues.
With this 18% increase over these next four years, in what year will we pay off that unfunded pension liability?
Well, there, there is a lot that will go into that, so I'm not trying to artfully dodge your question. It's more of a question of how exactly the investments and what exactly the returns are. If we are able to stick to the standard that is set by CalPERS, then we will meet that 12-year mark of having it all paid off or having it 100% funded by that time.
Even with the 18% increase?
Yes.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a public comment. You didn't call for public comment.
I did.
Well, I couldn't hear you. May I address you?
Sure.
Is it too late?
Sure.
Sure it's too late?
No, I'm sure you can address us.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first question I have is, are you out of your minds? There's no outside study stating that an 18% salary increase is warranted to any non-public safety employee in Los Alamos. There's no outside financial report showing the city can afford an 18% increase in salaries over the next five years. City's use of outside consultants makes these calculations based on accurate financial reports, comparative salaries and job duties, and in equal-sized cities and equal-sized budgets. None of that's been presented to the public. Your manager hasn't provided you with these studies, he told, they're pending. The city manager is sticking his hand into the cookie jar and taking taxpayer money out without providing any factual basis for entering into a long-term contract to fund city employees. The city manager presented a 2021 financial report replete with dozen of financial errors. $10 million error in reporting income, 3.6 error in reporting expenses, and for some reason, $700,000 is missing, either through incompetent reconciliation of financial records or outside theft. The city manager and finance director cannot explain how in one year a $22 million pension deficit magically decreased by $7 million in their 2021-22 financial report. No payments were made. In fact, the calculation prepared by the finance director to set aside $260,000 a year was modified to set aside $50,000 a month or $600,000 a year, an error of 100%. The public cannot trust any financial information coming out of Los Alamos. Public requests for records, financial records from the city's investment institution are ignored by the city clerk, and the city manager refuses to pride backup documents for warrants paid. There's no way for the public or council members to verify the accuracy of any financial report by the finance director. The finance director has failed to explain why there is a $1.3 million difference in the market value of his investments and the cost he paid for them. Why did the city manager and finance director remove almost 80% of the city's investment in the local agency investment funds? The result of this investment decision appears to be an overall loss in excess of $1 million a year for at least two years. The same in less investment loss was not recognized by LAEF. Nofalda Hasselbrink and Dobie voted against an outside audit to rectify the 21-22 financial errors. It is highly suspect that the state of California decided to do an audit of the city's financial report anyway, and the city manager chose not to disclose the existence of the state audit to the public or council members. Residents should know that audit is pending, and the city manager should not make wild financial decisions until that audit is cleared. Hibbard and Murphy pointed out numerous errors in the latest budget proposal presented to the city manager and finance director and asked for correction. But the same three council members, who did not want to audit the 21-22 financial report, voted to submit the budget to funding agencies without first correcting the errors and seeking council approval. Who in their right mind advises an elected official to approve a budget with known errors? I do not object to the salary increases to the police department. They are underpaid based on competitive salaries in other police departments. To keep your police staff, you need to provide them with competitive salaries and benefits. However, bulking up non-public employees' salaries is not only necessary, it's reckless.
Time, you're out of time.
Thank you, but I can assure you, this will probably go into a newspaper and also November campaign literature.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
You got a second?
I got a second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Let's see. Item number 10, council announcements. At this time, council members may also report on items not specifically described on the agenda that are in the interest of community, provided no action or discussion is taken except to provide staff direction to report back or to place the item on a future agenda. I'll start with you, Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink.
Hi, I'm hoping to report.
Councilmember Murphy?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Hassel, um, sorry, Hibbard?
Thank you. I prepared a statement this evening that I want recorded verbatim into the minutes. I'm providing a copy of my statement to the city clerk's office to ensure my statement is entered accurately. And here's a copy for you. I could email it as well. I'm concerned about the lack of decorum and respect at our council meetings. Roberts' rules of order and parliamentary procedures are not being followed. It's out of order to interrupt a council, a member of council when they have the floor. Our council meetings are the time when we discuss city business openly. Healthy debate is good. Differing perspectives are good. We don't have to agree with each other, but each council member should be given the respect they deserve as an elected official. We are sitting up here not representing ourselves or our own personal interests, but instead, the interests of our residents. We're here to represent the residents of Los Alamos, and I hope we can do a better job of respecting each other in the far, in the following months and going forward. With that said, my neighbors and I are also concerned about the lack of financial transparency here in the city of Los Alamos. At last month's council meeting, I requested basic financial information and was denied. The following is an excerpt of the transcript of our March 18th, 2024 city council meeting. This was captured in an article and was published on March 27th, 2024 in the Event News Enterprise article titled "Los Al" Presented with Creating Community: Recreation and Parks." The article reads as follows. During the discussion of the consent calendar, however, there was a sharp exchange between councilmember Emily Hibbard and city manager Chet Simmons as she expressed frustration about not being provided with the financial documents she requested. After repeated questions about city finances by Hibbard and councilmember Tricia Murphy over the past several months, the city recently changed its warrants policy to try to have their questions answered before the meeting and presumably out of the limelight. On Tuesday, Hibbard questioned the policy and questioned why the city has refused to provide her with copies of invoices she requested. She said the city manager has not even responded to her emails, so she wanted to make her request public. Although she questioned the expenditure of a $12,000, of $12,000 for an interim finance manager, she focused most of her questioning on a $32,000 payment to a company she identified as Harris and Associates for performing a peer review of the Lamson Project. The Lamson Project is a housing project of about 250 mixed-use homes under consideration to be constructed on a large parcel of land along Lamson Avenue. Quote, "That again is a question you can get an answer to," said Simmons, referring to the interim finance manager. "This is just a stop-gag measure, interim finance measure, manager, to get ourselves to a position where we can find a qualified individual. We've been out to recruit for this position many times and have yet to find somebody that we think is qualified." Hibbard then asked about the invoice copy she requested without getting a response from Simmons, asking this time for her request to be duly noted in the minutes of the meeting. For the invoice, Hibbard asked Simmons, "As a matter of public record, about how many days do you need to provide this information? I will have to go back and see what exactly it's going to take in order to pull up each piece of that information," said Simmons. "Again, in the interest of time," he added, "we can speed up this process. If these questions are given to us beforehand, we can have an answer before we get to the actual council meeting." Regarding the Harrison Associates $32,000 expenditure, she asked to see the invoice. "I just want to clarify because I was under the impression that invoices are not being provided to council members. So, is that true, or can we still request invoices or backup documentation? I will try to provide as much information as I can in order to get you to a place of comfort about your question," said Simmons. "So, are we providing invoices?" "No," asked Hibbard. "It's more than I can provide," he said, instead offering to provide an explanation as to what exactly the invoice was for. "Okay, and does the city of Los Alamos take the position that council members will not be provided with financial documentation to support our expenditures?" asked Hibbard. "Not sure I follow your question," said Simmons. "I'm asking for invoices. I'm not sure what we're spending these dollars on, so I'd like to see the invoice instead of an email with a narrative. I'd like to see the actual invoice." "Is it the city's position to provide the invoices to council members?" asked Hibbard directly. "This is a council policy that we do not provide invoices," answered Simmons. "What policy was that?" asked Hibbard. "It was the action that the city council was asked whether or not they agreed with that policy, and there was no voice of opposition," the city manager responded. "And what was the date of that?" she asked. "I couldn't tell you," said Simmons. "I couldn't tell you," said Simmons. "And was there a vote taken?" Hibbard asked. "No," said Simmons. "But it was the issue that actually led us to having a warrant policy in the first place." "So there was no vote taken," affirmed Hibbard. "And so it's a policy based on no vote? I think that is very common in my role as city manager. I will say that absent hearing voices of opposition to this, I intend to do things this way." "And that has stood for the last, I want to say, at least four months," he responded. "So just to be clear, the city of Los Alamos does not provide financial documentation to city council members upon request. Thank you," said Hibbard. "I wanted to share this article this evening for two reasons. First, it's now April twenty-ninth, over a month and a half after my request, and I still have not been provided with the Harrison Associates Lamson Peer Review Report. By not providing this thirty-two thousand dollar report to council, it looks like we're hiding something from the public. Are we? Second, in this article, Mr. Simmons refers to a made-up fictitious policy and as his reason to withhold financial information from this council. A written policy to withhold financial information from council was never discussed at a public meeting, and such a policy was never voted on at a public meeting. What happens when a city manager refuses to provide financial information to council? How does the public benefit from a city manager withholding financial details? It is the duty of this council to provide financial oversight and to ensure public funds are being used for the public's good. I'm concerned about the city's finances. For the past year and a half, my experience on this council has been peppered with financial errors, mistakes, miscalculations, and miscategorized expenses, and this has just been what I've been able to get my hands on. I'll include with this. I've been knocking doors throughout the city, and it has been my pleasure to, meeting so many Los Al residents. And to all my neighbors, thank you for taking the time to speak with me. Thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts with me. Thank you for taking the time to share your stories with me. You are my favorite part about being on this council. I'm here to accomplish one thing, to serve. If there's anything I can do to serve you better, please call me directly at five-six-two-four-four-four-six-seven-five-one. Again, that's five-six-two-four-four-four-six-seven-five-one. Thank you.
Okay. Let's just move on. Do you have any, Councilmember Dobie?
So I'm going to share nothing, but I had the most exceptional time out at our Arbor Day. Epsom purchased us two trees, and they brought a slew of staff. And apparently, I brought the sunshine, because I brought my yellow sweater and my, my yellow sneakers. And we were able to get, I think it was two little people with their shovels out, and they got to dig in. It was a little difficult, it was difficult for me, too. But they were able to help to plant the tree, and that was important to me because trees represent the future, and children are our future, not to be cliche. So I just wanted to share that, you know, I'm going to continue to be that ray of sunshine. Y'all should have seen those babies, they were so happy. And Epsom was so appreciative that they had a council representative out there. They were so happy. And it was also great that we got Chet out and Ron out and Emmeline out, and so much of our staff was there. And Epsom just was gushing about how wonderful the event was and how they want to collaborate more and how we can deepen our relationship. And that's when I sent them to Emmeline, because that is definitely her department. So I'll have more, of course, later, but I just wanted to give y'all that.
Thank you. We will adjourn the city council meeting at six-thirty-five P. M. On today's date, what is it, April twenty-ninth, Thursday? Thank you.